...of interest, understanding you can certainly declare when an item comes up. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? So nine A, I'll go through these three and then Phil. Nine A, I got Mary Brown's drive-through. Nine B is Forty-One Hour Guile Street property. Nine C is the land for the community garden. And what else do we have? Deputy, did you have something?
Yeah, and I think maybe I see Mr. Horton's here is the
Update.
Update on the internal audit, but I think one of the writers of the document or the lead company won't be here until tomorrow to
Yeah, it's the earliest he could get here was
Okay, so maybe you can just explain that, your worship?
Yep, good, so nine D, that's nine D. Anything else?
So I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Counselor
Okay. Dennis?
Counselor Dennis as a result of her required treatments in Halifax.
Okay. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
The other thing, I have a very brief in camera as a result of some meetings
Yeah, we have
that I had in Halifax, and I'll give you that after
Some in-camera meeting, material as well. Okay, anything else, anyone? Add, delete, and all that jazz? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda with the additions?
Still moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor McLeod, second by Deputy Mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, so presentations, welcome Steve from Respect Youth Engagement Model. So you know the drill, ten minutes, and then if we have questions, good.
Wonderful.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
If anybody down back wants to see this, you can certainly come up and you can get a better view. You can haul your seats right around if that's what you want to do. Sure. Okay.
So, so thank you very much, everyone, for allowing us to be here. Really wanted to come here because we have been working within our community and many folks here. That's like a significant role, I think of Phil, was the advisor from council for many years to a really exciting program that came out of the Women's Center called Youth Truth Matters. So Youth Truth Matters has been seven years in the works, okay? So this was funding from the federal government, and the initiative essentially was to put to empower youth to deliver throughout your awareness and in creative ways that would engage their peers in the school system. And so the funding was initially four years, we got three years, they can't say we, I'm really speaking on behalf of the tri-county women's center. That's sort of what we're asking at the moment. So one of the challenges with exciting programs, they get funded federally, is the funding ends. And you can all relax, I'm not here to ask for money. So we started doing what we call Sustainability Planning towards the end of that seven years. And what we realized is that over that period of time, there had been a tremendous amount of experience gleaned on how to effectively engage young people, right? So as municipal council yourselves, and when I was a counselor, there were a lot of impetus to work more like with young people. And we might have an idea like, hey, let's do a youth council. And without really understanding the intricacies of how to do that, right? So what we elected to do was try and take all the lessons learned from Youth Truth Matters and encompass that in a model so that we can help support organizations eager to engage. Now, this has been great and challenging, great in the sense that it seems to be an enormous need. Everybody was so ready to collaborate on this thing. So we've had many collaborators, I had one of them, not really a collaborator, because Adrian Murphy, who's on the line with us from elsewhere in the province, has played an instrumental role in refining and evolving Respect U pointed in now. So the handout that you guys have has two sides. One side will tell you a little bit about the Respect Youth Engagement Model and why we want to engage youth. The other side reveals the seven engagement principles. And we've had collaboration with the Canadian Center for Substance Abuse, with the Mental Health Commission of Canada, with Harvard, and so many other agencies that are working with young people. So I think at this point, I want to introduce Adrian. So Adrian, you want to see if we can hear you now? Can you guys hear Adrian? Yeah. So Adrian, anything on the intro items?
Uh, did you want to talk about the website a little bit?
Yes. RespectU.com is where we place all the content that we've been building. And our collaborators around the province have been helping prove the things that go up there. So we have examples of really good engagement and where those came from. I'll just move over to, are you on the website now?
I can.
I've got it.
Yeah.
I have it on another window. So this is RespectU.com. And again, this project is housed within the tri-county go-to center here in Yarmouth. But it's been adopted by the Notice Social Health Board as the youth engagement model of choice for a provincial project around youth gambling. And some of the funding for that project has allowed us to mature the technology. We have videos on here. Each of these respect principles is a different page. And then we've also got a survey that's there for most for adult or youth that will help coach on, for example, you know, if split broadcast is an initiative for young people, they can go on there, and the survey's going to ask some poignant conversational questions to start thinking, you know, have we met all the criteria? And to be honest, no one meets all the criteria. It's all about, you know, engagement as a process. And so we can just continually get better. And let me give you an example from an eager council, right? So I was a counselor, and my first idea was, we have to engage young people. We have to feel well. So I went ahead and passed a motion on establishing a youth council. Of course, in retrospect, that's not really how we make change happen. We have to really connect in a more collaborative way. So that's what Adrian, I consider to be a bit of a master of collaboration. Or I sometimes just want to do it myself because it's fast. So Adrian, why don't you tell us a little bit, or lead us into the municipal implementation? We should really walk it by ourselves because
Yeah, we've got four minutes.
we express interest. And I want you guys to understand that this is homegrown in Yarmouth. And it's something that I'm very, very proud of in our community, and I expect you guys to Okay, Adrian, you're on.
Okay. So also, thank you very much for having us here today. Very excited about it all. What happened in DeGlasco, Old Bachelor Creek County, was that there was a lot of work done around the municipal alcohol problem, which I know also happens over there. And there's a lot of focus that allows for connection between the townies and young people to get together. And at first, there was a lot of focus around, let's have youth support. And so while we were having children, and young people started saying, why are there flyers called "We Can Talk, We Can Fight, We Can Love," and "This is a successful recipe to achieve our own success," or if we can't make a real impact or change the walking in the world if we don't have people who are into the power or justice, whatever it is that we can interact with. So then they started having a series of interest generation forums. And the last one, I was a part of. And in that forum, the very first question down for a second is up on the screen. What do you think we've seen in our community? What are your greatest positive experiences? And the biggest fear was that we have the voice, and no one listens. So there were benefits and worries that people had, and they were prepared to accept. That basically the current, even if young people did stand up and do something, they would be competitive and they're taught, and no one's very interested in them. So it's like a strong ripple, you can go down, guys, the folks who came on to council in DeGlasco, to assist in some business, to partner them with the youth council. And that has been a great contribution, or forgive us, sorry, jury has here. But also, it's a commitment to have respect, the ethic of them, for them to make sure that people are on right foot. And we won't put into everything that we did there, but the basic concept of what we did, this is on the screen, I will see, it's a process. So it's from the primary to the community, to the community of the citizens. And what we do is we go out with a vision process. And then we go back to, okay, the present reality, what are the strengths and challenges that are facing inside of our community? And then we write from all kinds of ideas, and then we prioritize them. Because not only ideas, but not just like the right stuff, but we have to make sure it's a priority of education, how does those work that vision, and it doesn't matter. So we did that with town in DeGlasco. We had two meetings so far. The first meeting was with town councilors, all the town councilors, and all the, it was pretty much all set as a division department with its staff. And also different members of the rest of the community, the Lord, the culture, the people of
Adrian?
Yeah.
Do you go into this presentation role?
Uh, yes, I might do, oh, I thought I was going to do the other thing. Okay, so, yes. So we started kind of meeting with the town. And the purpose of that meeting was really to make sure that there was space made within the county of DeGlasco to understand how to engage young people effectively, and what kinds of support they might need. So, you know, it's like all the work that, oh yeah, well, this is a crazy party, we want to do an event. And so that young people can have a better sense of what resources they have, or control. We, a lot of the good, all of the good activities we did, but the energy at the end of it, people were so excited and very pumped up. And at the beginning, people were also concerned, you know, why do I have to go up on the committee on to the local community itself? But then kind of it, they realized that there was actually a lot of talent for them to be there. So over through those committees, there are ten young people, aged fifteen to thirty-five, that are on the committee. And there are, so there are two councilors that are also sitting on the committee. Yet we've also had other people express interest to come in, if they're able to make meetings, they will make meetings. The CAO probably will take all of the meetings. The mayor, and we have the head of the community development assets of the town. That's who's in charge of the youth here constantly. The second meeting that we had, we had with just the, like, with the committee itself, and then all of these other quarters. And somebody's to define, who's being active, they said aren't personal, they said they found out what are some of the strengths and their skills they have, and how can they actually help each other, so learn the skills from each other. Some of the people didn't want to know how to do community co-operation, whereas there are other people on the committee who know how to do that. So we essentially, we use respect a lot in designing the process itself, that everything we did had a purpose, that everything will act, that every one of these breaks area, and often that everything for your board, because we're very eager to act. And so we're going to be moving forward with this. And here, we're also, one of the big challenges, I think, for town, or any kind of government, generally is around power and authority, because there are certain assets where the town has to maintain certain integrity in the decision-making, that has to be maintained by the town, the committee, or whatever it is. And so what we're going to be doing is using times, we're going to be doing activities that allow for the youth to understand where they can have free reign to do anything that they want to do, and where they have to have, you know, more connection, be part from the town. And things like recommendations to the town, to them to understand that they can make recommendations, but they're just treated like they're one of all of the other committees, that there is no obligation on the towns we have, or counties we have, to follow their recommendations. So that they can set their expectations right. So the only other thing that we want to add is that, as I was spoke of the town as a DeGlasco youth council or committee, I just came from another meeting with Lang House, they do amazing work around mental health. And just so that you're aware of what is happening in your town, just that they ran a program last year where they like to take the idea from health apps and transplant it, they like to do this here in Yarmouth, and it just has the results they were really looking for. And so we just started, you know, today, going through the strategic planning process we do with that. They're very excited about it, and we're looking at, whether it's community partners or NSBT, other ones that are looking at having a youth hub. So it's a space for young people to go, so they can access this, but also that we can help keep them, you know, in a positive frame. And it's one of the, the
Adrian, I was going to speak to that a little bit, because I sit on that advisory committee. So Lang House came down after a kind of unsuccessful experience, right? They put the resources down here, they wanted to engage young people, they didn't really get the participation they were hoping to get. So they went back to drawing board for you to respect as a container for this next phase. Lang House has some wonderful technology around how you get youth, helping youth, and that idea of peer leadership has all kinds of evidence to say, yeah, it works, it's great. But things like health authority struggle with that sometimes, and other service providers as well. One of the items I took from that action, I took from that meeting, was I was going to go through council, just to see if there is, are there any spaces in town that may be available for a youth-centered kind of space? I've also put leaders up who are friends, that are doing all the work around town. The name escapes me, they're down across from the red and white. Yeah, crack, yeah, crack. So they're going to get back to us, as to whether or not they want to, or they have resources to engage. So, you know, and you and I have been through this a little bit as counselors, and, you know, it's not as easy as we think to engage young people, right? So we had young people from Youth Truth Matters that came and presented to UNSM. I was told by UNSM, it was the most popular presentation of the conference. It gave you an example of how challenging it is, even within the health authority, right? That there was heavily on evidence. You know, their community folks wanted to do community health boards, but hey, you got to engage youth. Let's open up a scene on the health board for a young person. And as well-meaning as that is, we know from experience and from evidence that it's going to work. So the caution in all of this is that there's tremendous value in engaging young people effectively, but if it's not done effectively, it can have an opposite, I call that a rumor, in fact. It can actually get worse by not doing it well. So we have the tools in our community to do it well. It's made in Notice Social, it's made in Yarmouth, and there's tremendous opportunities. And I think really, if that, Adrian, unless there's something else, I think we'll just see if any of the people can answer questions. So thank you guys. Any questions or comments about, about respect and
Deputy?
What's the next step, Steve? What do you think? What is it?
Yeah, what do you want?
Well, I, you know, I purposely came into the committee of the whole because I didn't have a motion in mind. I think that, I think my sense is there's the impetus to engage young people and to do it well. I'm not sure, I've explored, I think what they're doing in DeGlasco makes a lot of sense. So it's a committee like our other committees. It's a council like our other committees. But what needs to be worked out and collaborated on is how it gets set up, how the youth voice gets heard, how resources are shared, and you have to be really open and honest about how we're going to share power, right? Because young people are typically disempowered in the hierarchies of education, et cetera.
But under an advisory council, if that's what we're thinking, or if that's what we lean towards, under an advisory council, they would be empowered as much as any other citizen.
Right.
Not more.
Right.
Not less.
Yeah.
And they'd have to be, and I guess they'd have to be okay with that if that's the way we were going.
Right.
And Steve, do you know if that's sort of, Cliff, is that just a town in DeGlasco, or is that kind of like Picto, Stone, to the track?
That's the town.
Is that just a town on the
I would suggest that's just a town.
I think it's just a town.
Yeah.
And I should mention that
Don't know if they
the park municipal affairs have also put a little bit of, a little bit of contribution in there to make sure that tools that we are developing as part of that implementation, and I say we, but really Adrian and another consultant are playing the lead up there. But we want to make sure that lessons learned could be translated a little bit to other municipal units. So hopefully, there'll be some sharing in that regard.
So, so just one more before I ask Cliff. So we know what works, right?
We know what works.
We know what works. So, so I'm just going to say this because I have to.
Okay.
Nobody's going to put their hand out to the government and say, let's do a study and try to figure out, right?
No.
Okay, because I can't support that anymore. Okay, good, go ahead, Cliff. I think we're past that, right, which is important?
And this is what we call practice-based evidence, right? So this is not about fancy reports that have been written.
Yeah.
This is seven years in Yarmouth, every school in our school board engaged with Youth Truth Matters.
Yeah.
And we've been compiling and collecting evidence, and we know what works.
Good, Cliff?
So I picked up on whatever program it was you ran last year, you didn't get enough uptake from the youth, in your opinion?
This was, that was Lang House?
Yeah.
That did that?
So that goes to what you were saying.
So that means you didn't need it, to me.
No, you can't take what's in the city and think it works in a rural area.
No, but you didn't need it here. Whoever, so were salaries paid, and was a position created and all that? You found out after the period of time that it was useless for here? Is that the answer?
Okay, let me, let me dive down on that slightly. So what happens often, right, is services, especially in the field of mental health, mental health services are provided in a certain format and house size. And then when we try to export that to rural communities without contemplating the dear environment we have here, they crash and burn. And that's what Lang House tried, and let me reiterate, I'm not with Lang House, nor is Adrian. We brought up Lang House because Lang House is recognizing that what they might have missed is respect for youth.
So at the outset, you mentioned that these are federal government programs, they run out of money. That's the trick we see going on all the time. They set up a program, they buy a house downtown, and then they give one year of funding. And then the people who are employed in the programs have to skip from program to program like a hot scotch, hopscotch game, to keep surviving. Aren't you just back here for another one of those? Tell me if you aren't, and explain to me why I should not think that.
Can you please say that again? I didn't understand.
What I'm saying is, are you just looking for access? Did you access the Lang program because you ran out of another program?
Who's you?
No.
No, no, no. No, this whole process, the Youth Truth Matters.
This whole process, this process arises because we're hopscotching from one to another to another. And regardless of whether the program is workable in the rural areas or not, you take it if you can get it because it keeps some money flowing into the people that are running the program, keep the jobs going.
Do you understand this? Yeah.
Yeah, there is. If you don't want to answer it, don't answer it. I've got an opinion.
No, no, no. No, he's not understanding your question, Cliff. So the question is, is this viable? Is this, is it just, are we just, is it sustainable? Are we just asking for this because we're trying to tap into more money? So we create an entity that will tap into more money because this didn't work, so let's try? It's a fair, it's not an accusation, it's a fair question, because we see it all the time at the table where we're different groups, or they just have their hand out, and they do whatever it takes to get another batch of money. So it's not, so that's just the
Thanks, your worship. You put my question in a way that I incompetently put it.
No. Did I, did I overstep now?
You did very well, no, no, you did very well. I was incompetent in my question.
You weren't incompetent, you were, that was your legal line. This is, this is my, yeah. Yeah.
I was like, the next step is to understand, you know, what's the will of council in terms of engaging youth effectively?
Yeah.
If you decide that you want to engage young people effectively, then I would suggest that we have a more detailed conversation about how to do that.
I agree, I mean, I don't know if anybody disagrees. We want to engage the, we want to engage the youth in a way that works.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had said, I mean, you and I talked about it before, and I actually had a motion with the last council that, you know, you know, you remember that motion where I was told, well, the youth aren't going to show up to anything, they just don't care, like, oh my goodness, did you just say that on camera? But apparently you did. So, so yeah, so let's have a broader conversation. And we never, on it, just so you know, we never on a presentation make any decision. We'll just go back, we'll figure out which way we want to go, and, and, what's that? Yep, future agenda item. Yep, so good.
Thank you.
Right on. Thanks, Steve, and thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Adrian.
Thanks, Adrian.
All right. I'm going to kiss you then, here. Thanks, Adrian, we'll be on that later.
Okay, all right, so I have a CAO report, which is in front of us. Does anybody have any questions on that? Go ahead.
Your worship, I think Mr. Horton's here for the organizational review part of it, so maybe just give an overview of what the next step is, and I
Good, go ahead, CAO.
Yep, so we had hoped to have a final report for Committee of the Whole today. However, working with Scott Coleman, Scott is the principal at Optimum Talent in Halifax. As you recall, back when we started the process, Nicole, who did most of the legwork on this file, she had moved on to Grant Thornton, and was therefore subcontracted. So coordinating to get them down to review their final draft of their report, they weren't able to do it until tomorrow, in fact. And so her worship and I will be meeting with Scott and Nicole tomorrow, and hopefully have a final, final report for you shortly after that.
So that would be before the next Committee of the Whole?
That will be as absolutely quick as they, as they can provide it, and we'll carry that message, or your worship will carry the message tomorrow around timeline. So if you want next Committee of the Whole, that's what it'll be.
I can do that tomorrow, just tell them it's important we have it for the next Committee of the Whole.
Yeah.
So that they, they're not under any
Your worship, I'll add to that, is that one of the questions that I, that I know is going to come up from Scott, based on a phone conversation we had earlier in the week, is whether or not you want the report presented to council in a presentation, or if you just want the document delivered. And both are available to you, and so
Would you be good getting the document first, the presentation later?
That's what I'm thinking, too.
Give us a chance to look at it.
So your worship can carry that, your worship can carry that message tomorrow.
Good. Well, that's what we mean, yeah. So you'll have time to read it? Yeah.
So we get that document, that be, would that be put on the website, too, before?
We'll see.
We could do that? Before it gets presented to council?
No? When it gets presented?
Yes, okay.
Yeah. Good. Anybody else? We good? Okay, anything else for the C A O? Okay. Good, thank you. All right, Fire Department report. Chief, what you got for us today? Go ahead.
Is it, is it in order to move a motion to adopt the C A O's, approve and adopt the C A O's proposed report as tabled and discussed? And make that motion if it is?
Oh no, we've never done that.
So what do you think, Counselors? Should, should we be doing that, do you think? It's in the, okay, it's in the omnibus motion. And so...
See there, is that legal, right?
No, that's all right. That, that, that answers my question.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you, you want to turn your button off there? Okay, Fire Department Chief, you're on.
Thank you. My report was submitted. There's a new part to it now. I'm trying to get more in-depth in our specific fire department instead of all the fire departments in the area. So the report you've been getting over the last six, seven months dealt with all the calls in our general area, like not just our fire department. So now we're looking at through the computer, trying to be specific to our fire department. So if you look at the two reports, the first one that says Yarmouth Fire Department on top, and then underneath the call type, it also says Yarmouth Fire Department, that one there is specific to the calls that our department goes to now. And as we learn more about the computer system and everything, we might be able to define that even more. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because you'll, you'll be looking at the two reports, wondering why, as an example, year-to-date underneath medical calls is seventy-two, and the second report down, it'll be, it'll be less. And that's, that's how that works. So I just wanted to draw that to your attention, and if there's any questions.
I have a couple of questions. Yeah. Go ahead.
Fire Department Chief here for the whole meeting, right? John, are we going to do Forty-One Our Goul Street? Because I have a question, and it might be to the solicitor. And I drove by the property today, and that's the one that the fire was on last week, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess you could ask the solicitor.
And I was just talking about securing the property, so the fire chief said that's up to the owner, and I saw some kids within the last hour running through the rubble over the top of the thing in the middle of the property. And it wasn't fenced, and it wasn't ever, but then he said that falls back on the property owner. And they said the gentleman that owned the property, who is currently assessed to, vacated the property several years ago because of financial difficulties, and then no longer has an interest in the property. And the financial institution that owns the property and holds a mortgage will not foreclose due to the low cost recover and will take no action against the property. Can we take action against the financial institution?
You ate your cookie. Go ahead.
I'd have to look at the, the title to the property because if, if the bank or the financial institution has not foreclosed on the property, then it's not the owner of the property, and it's not responsible for any costs. It's the property owner. So sometimes banks won't foreclose because they don't want to, so they're not actually an owner of the property. But if they actually foreclose, then they do become the owner of the property, and then you can make them responsible for that.
So they didn't do their due diligence on the first part, and they expect that to do our due diligence and cost us financially on the back part?
You can make the owner of the property responsible.
So I guess liability, if we get, if somebody gets hurt, liability if somebody gets hurt.
Who's responsibility is it then? A kid runs across there, drives a rusty, rusty nail through his shoe, now has to get tetanus shots and all kinds of other stuff that comes with it. I guess who's responsible?
The town is not responsible because the town doesn't own the property.
Okay.
We can. Let's, let's discuss, let's discuss that now. It's later on the agenda, but let's do it while the chief is here?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay, C A O? Cliff, I'll get you in a second, okay?
So Your Worship, Russell Allen has provided you a report on that property, and he is suggesting because of the, the fire and the resulting mess on the property, property, I mean, the mess is right out adjacent to the sidewalk. It isn't set back at all. The owner is, is an absentee owner and takes no, takes no interest in the property, apparently. I understand it's been up for tax sale a couple of times and hasn't sold. It has been vacant. The, the mortgage holder is not planning to foreclose. And yet we have what, what in the opinion of our bile enforcement officer is a dangerous and unsightly condition, and he is recommending that the town take action to remove the danger by removing the rubble and charging the, the cost back to the, to the property, obviously. Now, the reality is that...
You're not going to get it back.
You're not going to get it, well, you're not likely to get it back. If the property didn't sell in the past at tax sale, but there was a liability standing on it, that liability has been reduced to charred remains. Removing those remains may be cheaper than dealing with that liability previously, so there might be a chance that someone will be entrusted, but very likely not. You would have the option at tax sale to be a participant, a bidder, if you wish to recover the property in lieu of your investment. But in any case, the greater, most immediate concern is the danger that that rubble that remains on the site presents to the public.
Somebody better talk before I say something. Go ahead, Cliff.
So it's simple. My, my question's pretty much been answered because that's exactly the process that I said should take place. We're stuck with it, and at the end of the day, we have to remove it because we're not going to recover it from anybody. The mortgage company's not stupid. They're not going to step in there and take on the liability. That's, that's for another discussion somewhere as to the province could amend some legislation. If they chose to do so, they probably won't, but they could do something to make a mortgage company liable. I don't think that's going to happen, but it did happen when, when it came to contaminated properties. It did happen when it came to contaminated properties.
But we've had, don't turn your light off yet, but we've had people say to us, you know, why would we take care of our mess? The town will take care of it. You know, like, something needs to give somewhere. You, you get a little bit tired of asking the taxpayers to foot the bill that doesn't belong to them because people aren't, or organizations aren't responsible.
Your Worship, this is a little different than a sophisticated businessman who deliberately sets up a scheme to do that. This is a person who, who was Frank, wasn't it? Owned that place? Doesn't have the ability at this stage in his life to deal with it.
No, I understand that, but a company does.
In the case of the sophisticated businessman, yes.
Yes.
And maybe the sophisticated businessman divests his property to a shell company and decides to eventually stick the town with a bill for demolishing it. But in this case, it's a little different. But I agree with you. We're getting stuck with these. But absent some change in legislation at the, at the provincial level, we have to move on. And it's just one more way for government to download expenses to towns.
But, but so how about this? We finish this conversation, and then maybe we make a motion that says that we need to start talking to the government about this, like enough.
You've got regional meetings coming up, the U N S M, so it could possibly be the substance of it.
Yeah. Okay?
And, and I'm more concerned about timeline and process than, I know we have to clean it up because it's, it's unsightly and it's dangerous. If this would have happened, say, the fire would have happened today, and we don't have a Committee of the Whole or a council meeting for three weeks, what's the process? Does Russell have the leeway to go out, call up maybe Harris, Strifries in Rose Valley, and say, give me a quote to tear down the property instead of getting a written thing in? And, and we've got to get this done as quick as we can get it done, right? Because it's, it's not pretty and it's not safe. So can Russell call? Maybe three or four, can you call and, and get a quote over the phone? Or just call tomorrow morning, say, give me a quote for this afternoon and get it ready? See what you, see what, go down and look at it, see what you...
See what the answer is. You sound like somebody I remember.
Danny?
Yeah, let him answer.
So in a situation, I always assume that on, on matters that are urgent, that council will be willing to convene an emergency meeting.
Yeah.
So if, if the timing hadn't worked out such that it has on this one, and Russell brought the matter to my attention, I would ask Pam to call a meeting so that we could get a motion passed by council, if necessary. In this case, you know, it's a matter of picking up the phone, gain some, gain some hourly rates on some machines and gain the job done. So if you, if you approve the recommendation, that's the way we'll proceed, and we'll get it looked after.
Okay, so I make a motion. Let's, let's...
Okay. Cliff?
Okay, good. Don's going to make a motion.
Yeah. I, I want to know what the motion is.
That the town of Yarmouth requests a tender or quote for the following, for the removal of the burnt debris and remaining shed of property located at Forty-One Our Goul Street, and apply the cost to the property tax.
Thank you, Don. Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. So, so good, Russell. But I got another question for Russell while you're here. May I do that? Like, ask Russell another question? So, and Chief, this is for you as well. And Russell, you updated me on the, the old Monroe building there. So something like this happens to, to Our Goul Street, we got that old Monroe building, and I have people in that area calling and saying, you know, it's just going to take one spark and my house is going to be gone. So how do you get more proactive on that? We have to, we own that now, don't we? But we have to wait?
We don't own, we wanted that to sell, we're in remission for six months.
Which was May?
That will end May twenty-ninth. As of May twenty-ninth, the town will own that property.
And then we can take that down?
Yes. We, my recommendation is to have a new ASAP, so it's not homeless.
All right. And now one more question. I don't want to keep going. I got, I got to address these. Is there anything else around that we need to look at? Like, do you identify these, Chief? Or Russell, do you identify them? Do you, you know what I mean? I mean, you can't tell what's going to go up in fire, but something like the Monroe building, we know. I mean, something's got to be done about that.
There's a great ability, Your Worship, and on a regular basis, I go and I walk around to make sure that the windows are secure, the doors are secure.
Yeah.
But that's not a guarantee that they're going to break in.
No, that's true. That's true.
But they are monitored, absolutely.
All right.
But they know what's going to take place in a meeting that they're going to need to do this.
I'd rather just be proactive and try to help the chief in some way before stuff happens, but...
There's also things that aren't, that aren't, that aren't due process or anything like that. We have a good relationship with the police.
Yeah.
And the police, or, or find kids going into a certain building on a constant basis, they'll let us know.
Okay.
We need Russell talking, it's not...
All right. As long as there's sort of something there to help you.
Nothing official.
Okay. All right.
But I'm, I'm somehow a mischievous man because if the R C P went to that building and pointed it in Our Goul Street twice in a day, I didn't, I didn't hear anything about it at all. So if it had been, if I had been notified a day or two or whatever, I could have offered it immediately to reseal it and, and secure that building.
Okay.
But somehow I'm not getting this, it's not being related to me that, well, I see so-and-so boarding this building, and I'm not getting that information related to me, so I can act on it immediately to have it secured.
So, so is there anything we can do to help you in that process?
Well, if the R C P reports it, I wish they would report it right to me correctly so I can act on it ASAP. I'm not saying they're at fault, but if they're identifying buildings that are being broken issue or if a public, and we're on camera, if the public see anybody going into an vacant building, please lobby an email ASAP, because I can get contractors that I have on standby and make it to that ASAP to, to secure those buildings.
Good.
But I'm just not getting that information.
Okay. Have you asked for it?
Or do you?
Have you asked for it from the police?
No, I haven't asked for it.
Okay, you can ask for what you want. Number one.
Yeah, that's the place to go with that concern directly, and, and if it doesn't work out, let me know. Go directly to the R C M P.
You can just go direct...
Does, does Adam, do we do that?
No, he, he can do that, and, and have that conversation sooner than later, I would suggest. Have that conversation sooner than later, and if nothing, then we can do police advisory, maybe just have a little chat, right? And, and Cliff, you can probably take care of that, yeah. Okay, Russell?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Yeah. Thanks, Chief. Okay, so Chief, you're done? You're good? Were you done?
Well, I was done.
Okay, good. All right, Planning Department? Nobody's here, but we can always, they ain't going to get any questions there. Yell at me, I can't see, like. Planning Department, Engineers Report, man, there's a lot of stuff going on. I just took a, I, I took a ride onto Clements Avenue by mistake the other night. I went right through a barrier. I did. Whoops. So, so I talked to Richie a couple days ago. I just went down to, to take a peek, and I, and he advised me that between Cliff and Jim, they got it covered. Because they were there and the pipes went in, so they want to make sure. They're two young whippersnappers. So, so anyway, so the, the, they were testing the lines and stuff for the last couple days? Or they're going to do it for the next couple days, and then they're going to start bump outs on John and then work back to Cliff?
They pressure tested the water line, and they're going to be doing a bacterological test, and then they'll put it in service and take the old, take the temporary line out.
Yeah. Good.
And then we'll be starting on the granulars and the concrete shortly.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Any questions for, for Dave while he's here? Good, good report, lots going on. A lot of stuff going on. And good timing, too, because he said that'll be paved by the first of June, and that's when the boat comes.
That, that's our schedule. Hopefully we will make it, but...
You're right. Good. Any more questions for Dave? We good? Thank you. Operational Finance Department. Jerry, we going to do that later? Okay. Recreation, was Frank here? I saw him hiding. Thanks for the other night. It was awesome.
And I apologize, I didn't get a report to council. But yeah, we, this week is Volunteer Week, so thank you for everyone that attended the volunteer reception on Tuesday. We're just knee-deep in getting ready for summer activities, looking at bringing on summer seasonal staff. We've hired our Steps to Connect project coordinator, and I think at a future council meeting, I'll arrange for her to come in and update council on her work.
Excellent.
So looking at training for staff and just, just arrange for lifeguards at Milo. So we're getting sports fields ready, we're doing registrations for minor baseball and minor soccer. So we're, we're knee-deep into it and looking forward to a busy summer.
And everything goes on that website. I like, I love to see everything that's going on in the community on that website because I do, I do breakfast television every couple weeks, and I'm trying to, try to promote, and I always go to the website, so it's good to see.
And Natalie has given me permissions for the community calendar on the Town of Yarmouth website, and we are going to get at it and start filling that in.
Yeah, good stuff. Any questions for Frank? Good job. Okay. Economic Development? How are you, Natalie? Busy?
Yeah, I think I'm a bit tired today, so I fall, I fall asleep. Your Worship, I, I provided my report. If anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer.
Go ahead, Deputy.
I think the, Natalie, and I didn't respond, but how has the uptake been on the content for the historic homes and some of the things that you put together to, to talk to some of the real estate people in town? Have you had any uptake?
I've had two realtors contact me to say they would like to participate in the discussion of what that would look like, the promotional material. I sent it to all the realtors in town, and I haven't heard back from the other three of the five that I sent it to.
I think I know, I think you've got the, the date of the week of May the eighth, and most of us will be away at the Union of Nova Scotia Municipals, but maybe do the next week or the week after. Send a note to the people that you already sent it to, and the ones that have... Send a note to the people that you already sent it to, and the ones that have replied, and, and if, if it's good for two or three people, come up there, knock some ideas around, and I think the other ones will follow suit fairly, fairly quick once it gets going. Because we had that discussion this morning, Your Worship, about a, a property on the outskirts of town, Council McLeod was there. Even though it was on the outskirts of town, I know they'll still buy all their building supplies at Kent's, you know, Pleasant Supplies, Home Hardware, wherever, wherever. So even if it's just on the outskirts of town, they still buy all their supplies right here in the Town of Yarmouth. So I think it's important, we should try something for the middle of May.
Good. Okay, so, so Portland? When are we, what's going on?
So in Portland, Jan, January, June the sixth, a contingency from here, mainly the frontline operators, will be heading to Portland, and then they're doing a familiarization orientation there, with staff there, so they're aware of what's happening on our side. And then Yasta and Neil will be organizing the reverse to happen here, where people from Portland will be coming here and getting some, some orientation training. The next big thing, which is a couple of days later, is the Old Port Festival. So that's where Yasta will be showcasing the region, so all the marketing collateral that Neil's been working on, any of the videos, they'll be showcased there, hopefully a fiddler. We had hoped to do a musical stage, have a presence there, but the cost to do that is around ten to fifteen thousand dollars, so just prohibitive at this time, so hopefully in the future, Music Nova Scotia and Yasta can, can plan for something like that.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Natalie? Good to go, thank you. Okay, we'll do number seven, in camera, Budget, let's get through this and then do Budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so Correspondence for Action, FCM Legal Defense Fund. C A L?
Your Worship, there's a memo attached from FCM explaining the purpose of the fund and how, how it is funded, and a request that we contribute, it's voluntary, it is not a prohibitive amount, I think it's under two hundred dollars if I recall, one hundred seventy-eight dollars. If, if it's your wish, please consider and make a motion to directing staff.
I'll make a motion that we make a contribution as requested, in the amount requested, to the FCM Legal Defense Fund. The objectives of the Defense Fund are broad-ranging, and they speak to issues that all municipalities can benefit from or receive good, solid legal advice. When there's issues involving municipal government, that oftentimes, these things go to the Supreme Court of Canada when they're big issues, and we need to be, or the FCM on our behalf needs to be at the table, so, and it's, it's a modest amount of money, frankly.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Francois Chouquet, Supreme Court Judge's Bilingualism. Ensuring Access to Justice in Both of Canada's Official Languages. Oh, sorry, but his light was, was on. Your, your on, your light's on. Did you wanna speak to that?
I wanna speak to that.
Okay, go ahead.
And probably some people won't like what I have to say. I wouldn't support this for a minute, because unilingual French-speaking people will be prevented from serving on the Supreme Court, as will unilingual English people, don't get it wrong. This is a, an NDP silly motion.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, when I, first thing I read, when I was home reading this, I said this excludes people right off, and I wouldn't be supporting this one one hundred percent. It's automatically against all, all the beliefs that I believe in.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page since we read the first couple lines. So received and placed on file, okay, do we have to second that? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, I'd love it when we're all on the same page, which is always. Municipal Yarmouth Resurface Quality Prospect Street. You better speak to that, 'cause I don't care.
Your Worship, um, there, there are some concerns in the municipality about the condition of Prospect Street, and as, as we all know, we own the south lane of Prospect Street, whereas the province owns the north lane. And so recently, Mr. Houston from T I R, the operations supervisor, met with municipal council, or at least advised municipal council of that, that shared responsibility. So they, they've asked that we, that we consult with transportation infrastructure renewal with regards to Prospect Street. And so my advice to you would be that we do just that at the time that the, that the resurfacing of Prospect Street rises to the top of our priority list for paving.
Okay, good.
We follow the C A L's advice.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, so I have a question. Every day I get email, message, note from somebody in Pickney's Point, Carlton, different areas about their roads. Do I send that to T I R, or I send that to, I just tell them to call T I R, or, no, I'm being, I'm being, you know, because I.
Well, as, as somebody who helps to pay for that, as somebody who helps to pay.
And we do, we, we pay for.
Yeah, so, so yes, the road, the roads in the municipality generally are the responsibility of transportation infrastructure renewal, with the exception of subdivision roads of J-class, I believe they're called. So, yes, if you have a concern, I would suggest that Mr. Houston appears to be the person to contact.
That's, that, that the, yes, that the folks in the municipality, whoever the person making the complaint is would call.
Yes.
Mr. Houston, okay, good.
To the person that sent you the letter.
Because they don't, because they're not in charge of the roads, they don't pay for the roads.
I just thought maybe that he has to answer the political question, you should defer it there instead of having it, that's all.
I, I agree with that, completely. Okay, good, thank you. That's helpful. All right, Municipal Yarmouth Communities Cultural Heritage Reedraft Trails Strategy. Go ahead, C A L.
Thank you, Worship, we received a draft trails strategy that has been worked on apparently by several, several stakeholders at the provincial level, and it's circulated to municipalities for comment before it becomes, or I guess before it becomes official. There is a role identified in their four municipalities, and it was highlighted in the version that you received. So I guess the question to municipalities is, do you have any comments with regard to the role that they've identified for municipalities in the strategy? My advice on that is, is, it's, it's kind of, it's not terribly specific, it's kind of vague, it's not out of sync with what we do, we do now with regard to trails within our jurisdiction, so it doesn't cause me any great concern. But, you know, you, you've read it, and you may have your own opinions on that.
Okay. Draft Trails Strategy, okay, so let me ask this, because I'm gonna be honest, I skimmed this, because I had thirty seconds with this one. Are we included in this? It's all I care about, honestly, because they, they re, they presented to, to U S M, and I'm on the executive there. So when they did that, you know, the, we noted that this end of the province wasn't on there. We have some of the most beautiful trails in the province, so as long as we're on there, go ahead, Counselor Wood. You just need to hit your button and leave it, and leave the rest to me, there we go.
Uh, we're on it generically, we're not on it by name, but we're on it in the sense, in this sense, that this looks like a foundation document to go forward and eventually get some money. And so when you go through the document in detail, what they do is they, there are comments about whether there, what, whether there are or are not potential impacts for us as a town with this shared strategy. So by putting the towns on, it looks to me like eventually, if they go for a funding thing, they'll, they'll be looking probably for funding from the province, from the municipalities proper, and from towns, that's what I'm thinking, but. And, and, and it does, I mean, some, some of the concepts do not involve towns, some do, they've got them checked off, and it's a lengthy document.
Good. Okay, so what are we doing with this one there, C A L? Okay, anything specific, let's do a motion, if not, we can, anybody, we good? Okay, all right, Request for Presentation Connector Program, so Brenda Legrand, yours back with us, we're pretty lucky to have her back. And she's with, the, Ren is the manager of the connector program, so she's just asking permission to present to council, that's not gonna happen, but committee, the whole, would, would work, Linda, can we, is, can I have a motion to do that if you're in agreement? Moved and seconded by Dawn, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, Previous Smoke-Free Nova Scotia, okay, that's just for information. Additions, let's get those done, so we can. Who's good in addition? Go, go ahead, Cliff.
So we've seen the smoke-free Nova Scotia people and others like it, including both levels of federal and provincial government, really trying hard for the last thirty-plus years to reduce the amount of smoking. And all I, my only comment on that is, we're moving into a whole new regime to promote smoking.
Yeah.
And I find it just mind-boggling to think, are we gonna have generic packaging? We're gonna allow four plants, that gives me and Joan each, well, we can have eight, 'cause I got two hot houses. They could've solved the problem with the criminal records and this legalization by amending the Criminal Records Act to say that you shall not receive a criminal record if you're convicted of possession of X number of grams of marijuana. Period, end of story.
Decriminalize.
Have a three hundred and seventy-five dollar fine, the same as it is for an open can of beer in the wrong place.
Decriminalize versus legalize.
Decriminalize.
Yeah.
But no, they've gotta go out and buy votes from the kids, and come up with this crazy, four, four plants. I mean, it's already, hadn't they learned anything from the medical marijuana thing? I don't know any one of those people that wasn't a pothead long before they had a pain. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor, for your wise words. You know what? I'll tell you why we're laughing, 'cause you're blunt about it, good on you. Right? You weren't allowed to laugh for the last four years, now you're allowed to laugh. Okay, we put it on the agenda, yeah, you were laughing a lot for the last four years. Put a stop to that, you're not allowed to laugh anymore. Everybody's gonna be laughing, 'cause you're the mayor next week, woo! He says to Tracy, he goes, Tracy, home McCalls next week. You're in charge, Mama's in Barbados, okay, Mary Brown's Drive-Thru.
Uh, Your Worship, there was a item about the drive-thru referred to the traffic authority, Dave is here, so perhaps he'd just present, present his recommendation.
When the drive-thru was proposed, it was recommended that the exit from the drive-thru line up with the superstore driveway, and the exit be perpendicular to the Charles Crosby Drive, to prevent both left and right-hand turns. This would enable traffic through, the option of turning left to avoid traffic on Stars Road if they're hitting north or west to Brunswick or Main Streets. As well, this was one of the recommendations of the traffic study that was undertaken for Stars Road corridor by Galco Traffic Engineering. It was recommended to, that diverting traffic away from Stars Road Pleasant Street intersection in order to relieve congestion on Stars Road. This would allow traffic to dissipate in several side streets. It's not recommended that the drive-thru exit be limited to right-hand only, as this will force traffic back onto Stars Road. And contribute to congestion, congestion during peak periods. So that's, that's my report with regard to that.
So, so basically, we're keeping it the way it is?
Okay.
I, I wasn't, I forgot this either even passed, that a motion even passed on this one. I don't, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't think we put any type of driveway in without looking at a, a traffic study or, or those types of things first, so I think a reaction to a couple folks that, you know. Go ahead.
So under your new, your new MPS and L U B, the traffic authority is, is permitted to allow additional entrances and exits on a property. This specific request was dealt with under that, under that provision, and, and Dave granted the, the egress for the drive-thru. During the first week or two of, of their operation, they, they were very successful, and there were lineups, long lineups, and both going in to get the food and, and also exiting, and I think that's where the, where the concern arose.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I agree, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, what I probably shouldn't say, 'cause it gets me in trouble, is we need to take into consideration those things before we come to council with. Just gonna leave it like that, it just, you know, you know. Stuff, right? It, it's sort of like, um.
I, I went out there and watched it one noon hour after the novelty wore off, and I mean, there was no problem.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, it's just like, you know, certain, maybe on a, wanna, on a Friday, at, at, you know, on a Friday, when, when maybe some people get their checks, it's busy downtown, but you don't change the traffic, because it's busy downtown on a Friday. You know, I, it's, I think all that's taken into consideration, go ahead, Cliff, I probably said too much.
No, you didn't, Your Worship, but I will say this, a lot, there are some members of the public that don't understand that we do not have the authority, the power legally, to tell the traffic authority what to do. We can ask him to look into it, as we did, he can make a recommendation, I think it's a good recommendation.
Very good.
He went to the proper place to look when he did it originally, that's the report, we paid a good sum of money to get, and, but we do not have the power to direct him. Even after the planning thing is done, he is the traffic authority, he's independent of us.
So you better know what you're doing, Dave. But it was, you know what, the next, the, the next couple days, I was laden with calls from people that couldn't turn left out of the mall. And I'm like, so turn right, or, or go out, you know, the Charles Crosby, or, or go out Pleasant Street, we can't fix. I think it's amazing that the town's getting busy enough that we have traffic issues, that's my, anyway, I'm gonna leave it, 'cause I'm always in trouble. Okay, we did forty-one Argyle Street. Sorry, de, or, uh.
It's fine.
Previous deputy?
Delayed deputy.
You're, by the way, you're the deputy next week.
I was just doing a, unrelated, when do we expect the lights on the corner of Stars and Brunswick to work?
I would expect that they'll be operational tomorrow, I have the contractor coming back down tomorrow first thing, so he'll be working there tomorrow.
Just curious, I've been getting a couple of questions, that's all, thanks very much, Dave.
That's another one, right? Okay, good, so Community Gardenland, I just, there's no motion, I just want us to, there might be a motion. The, the mayor's task force on the social issues, and we thought we would tackle food security this month, because it's spring, and it's the time to plant and all that, and I think we all understand the teach a person to fish, and they won't be hungry, as opposed to keep giving them, you know, the enabling piece. So anyway, we had some discussion around how we could create more community gardens, and not for any special demographic, for everybody, because it's a healthy thing to do, and I was just thinking, at this council table, would be, be willing to maybe even ask. maybe even ask staff to see if there are a couple of plots of land, they don't have to be big, but just a couple of spaces, or if we could get together and just think of, you know, where are some of the spots that we could, um, maybe do some community gardens and have the gentleman that does, uh, maybe Chuck Smith even, 'cause he does a great job, and, um, have them help us figure it out and let the community do it. Go ahead Jim.
Do they have to be within the town boundaries, why can't they be outside in the municipality?
It can certainly be in the municipality, the municipality would have to do that.
Sure.
I can certainly talk to one of the counselors and, actually, I already have, and, um, that counselor could bring it, could bring it to them. But I'm think, you know, I was even thinking like, the library, there's so much green space over there, couldn't you just do two or three plots, really nice plots there? There's, there's lots of places. Where's the old reservoir? Rotary Park. No, you, yeah, go ahead Jim, I just don't know what the next step is.
So, so staff don't have any difficulty identifying plots of land, but the community gardens that exist right now, I don't think either of them are actually on town property. I think they're on, well, the one in, in Milton is on, uh, church property.
Church property.
And I think the one, uh,
Okay.
on, uh, name of the street.
Bernard and-
Bernard, yeah, I don't think that's our property.
Okay.
But, you know, there are lots of, lots of green spaces or empty lots around town that, uh, that a garden could be done. What, what needs to happen is you need, you need people that are willing to use it.
Yeah.
Um, there used to be a community garden, as a, as a matter of fact, in, in Milton where the former school was.
Okay.
It was a small one there. Uh, so, you know, there are some people who want to, uh, make a community garden, uh, you know, we'll certainly work with them to help identify. Uh, you, your land use bylaw might come into play, I'm thinking, we'll have to check with the Development Office, make sure it's a permitted use and wherever the location might be, but the first thing is who's interested.
Yeah.
And, uh, our role can be, you know, as simple as helping them identify
Okay.
a location in their neighborhood.
So, so how about this, how about I just do a general call out and see if we can get people that are interested and then we'll take the next steps. Like there's, I don't think, Dawn, I don't even think there should be a school without a garden, I really don't, 'cause you're trying to teach, you know what I mean? You know what I call that? I call that entrepreneurship. Yeah, right? And I think it's the right thing to do, it teaches them.
We, uh,
Good.
Your Worship, we spoke about the Monroe Building, which adjoins the existing community garden downtown. That would be an excellent opportunity when we clean that up to, uh, expand that one there. Uh, you know, we clean it up properly and get some topsoil back on there, then that could be a, a neat little expansion to what they have there.
So I'll take the next steps anyway, and just, yeah, I'll do that. Okay? Update on audit, oh, we al- you already did that and we're good. So are we going to budget at the back table, you wanna do it right here? You guys good right here? Yeah, okay, so Jerry, you're on, are we doing budget now?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do budget. And unders- I have to be somewhere by six. With the what? We're six thirty at Mariner Center. Six thirty at Mariner Center, yeah. I'll update you all before, we gotta go in camera anyway. Okay, so Jerry, are you coming over? Are you coming to this one, okay, I'll just get you set up, um, presentation. Yeah, we're gonna update in camera on a couple of items. Yeah. We, we have a meeting tonight at six thirty folks.